Three particular students and collective bargaining with the East Aurora Faculty Association. Do you have any agenda changes?
No.
No items requiring board action? And Superintendent Hammond?
I just would like to start off with a statement to address the horrific tragedy that occurred this Saturday in Buffalo. We stand united with all school districts in Western New York and all community members in Western New York denouncing racism. Patriot has no place in our community. Please join me for a moment of silence for the victims, their families, and their friends. Thank you. Well, today is a special day for some of our students. Each year, the superintendent's art collection started decades ago. We're going to research, we're going to try to find out when the actual date was, but we know it's gone back before Mrs. Whopper's tenure, which is it's not dinosaurs, but it's been a while. And so we know it's been several decades and the art collection is really quite amazing. So each year, the art teachers have a very, very difficult job to select just one member from the group that they teach to add their piece to superintendent's art collection. And today we have Kaylee Ron, Alisa Silva, Avery Zach, and Anna Call with us. Four brilliant artists, and I'm going to turn it over to their art teachers that will talk with them and help us to explain their work of art. Mr. Ben Oster.
So Mr. Ben Oster is chairman on the curriculum coordinator for the art department. Also in your department, we have Mr. Kegler at the high school. We have Mr. Wallhauser at the middle school, and we have Ms. Piccolo down at Parkdale. So my student is from a studio in art class, which is the fundamental art class that we have at the high school. It's the one they need for that art credit for graduation. And I don't think you can start coming up. She's a sophomore, and traditionally, this is a freshman class. But I didn't hold the sophomore against her. The work that she was producing was exceptional all year long. And about, I would say it was February that this project was, maybe January. This, as soon as I saw it, I said, this is the piece. So I was holding on to it for a couple of months before this came along. And I'll let her tell you a little bit about the assignment.
It was an impressionist piece with a lot of colors and pastels. So I just did windmills with sunset in the background and water. I had to use a lot of pigment on it because it was black paper, so it's kind of rich and light. So I did a lot of blending of colors for the sunset and then short strokes for the water.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Small token of appreciation.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tom Egler. I also teach at the high school. And as Ms. Russ was alluding to, it is a difficult task picking one piece. I was kind of doing the math in my head when he said that I've been preparing for the art show, which we'll talk about in a little bit, for the past few months, and I've already prepared over 100 works for the show myself. And there's probably three or four hundred other works that I've been looking at over the past year. So it was really difficult to pick one work of art to represent the superintendent's collection. So it's always daunting because it's also really fun to challenge the students and see where they go. This year's pick for me was Kaylee Ron. And the class that I picked this for was actually drawing, which is actually a fairly fundamental class. And we teach in that class the basics of observational drawing through a series of exercises that challenge the student to really observe and draw what they see. And the piece that I chose for this was the second major project, which was a still life. And they were asked to basically bring in some objects they found interesting, perhaps had some symbolic value, and basically use a set of drawing pencils to create a variety of value scales and build that skill level up. But anyway, she did an amazing job. I'll let you kind of talk about your piece.
Okay, so basically, it's just a camera, a seashell, and this seashell is actually like one of the first seashells I ever collected down at the Outer Banks. And then like a glass vase and then just some grapes. I mean, I tried to make sure that the composition, you know, was interesting and simple at the same time. And then I want, I tried to build up some nice contrast, so that it was like interesting to look at.
Awesome. As with all these works, I do encourage you when we have a little break to come up and take a look at these post stuff because they're really impressive. As Tommy mentioned, Kaylee is a junior, so I am super excited that I'm going to have her in APR next year, which is, which is one of our more challenging classes. And now she has obviously a set of skills to begin the journey in AP. I'm really excited to see where you go with that. So and then, as I understand, you're an aspiring art teacher and potentially looking into maybe opening a shop at some point.
Yes.
So some creative endeavors that I think will do well with you. So congratulations.
Hi, I'm Dave Walls. I'm from here in the middle school, and this year's artist is Avery Zach. Avery made my job easy as far as looking at it. She really is a great, great student and artist. She's currently a seventh grader, and I've had the pleasure of working with her for the last couple of years. And it's been awesome to watch her grow as an artist, just amazing. Every project she tackles with creativity and enthusiasm, and it's contagious. It really is. She's amazing. She brings in her own media to work on projects and a true artist and an awesome student. So I'll let her tell you a little bit about her project.
So this was a one-point perspective piece. You were supposed to make shapes and have some sort of object go in and out of them. So I did this piece with a micron inking pen, Prisma colors, alcohol markers, and paint markers. So basically, the thought process here for making it was for the different cherry blossoms. I actually used my finger to blend it out and make it look more splashy and blossom. So that's pretty much it about it.
Well, when I walk around and then I see Avery's, you think you're not supposed to be part of the art teacher. Quite a fantastic artist. Good job.
I'll look at Palo. I'll have Alisa come up and pull that artwork and I'll be packing. I'm so incredibly proud of this year's student from Parkdale. Alisa Silva is in fourth grade. She continuously has been creating amazing artworks since I started working with her. Her dedication, craftsmanship, and care is always evident in all of her pieces. When choosing a piece for this year's collection, her bright color choices for this project is what caught my attention. We were inspired by Canadian artist Ted Harrison, his abstract landscapes and use of colors and lines. She did a great job doing her own twist on that in this piece. I'm very proud of her, and I know she'll continue to make masterpieces like this and all her other work.
What we'd like to do is maybe can we bring all the art stuff and just stand next to your painting? And we're just going to take a quick picture and then we'll give everybody a chance if we'd like to take a little break and come up and actually get a closer look because I think you'll really be amazed at just the quality of your work.
Yeah, that makes me a little nervous.
I can't help but find the origins of this project. I was around and the first years pictures. No, no, I know you're worried about the wire there. So at any rate,
so
building, I know once I find it. Yeah, it was done by Barb Peters' daughter. Yeah, it's an oil painting on the floor, and it's framed with a narrow black frame. It's about that big. But there were others. That was the only one that I remember from the first one. But there are others from that same year, and they all have little forest blacks with the painting. Well, it's not high because it could be that's to say money that Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you to our artists and our amazing art teachers. It's always such a highlight of the year. Thank you for sharing.
You want to say something?
Yes.
Everyone, excuse me, folks, we're back in the meeting. Thank you.
Just to be part, I wanted to thank the Board of Education for supporting the arts. We're very fortunate to be teachers in this district, and thank you and thank for all the parents and community members and our seniors that are here. The two special nights for the art teachers are definitely this night. A chance to celebrate one very special student. But then our second very special night is next Monday. It makes it special because we haven't had an art show in two and a half years. It's been two years off on our show, so we are super excited to announce our district-wide art show next Monday night at the high school. Food trucks, I believe, will be arriving around five-ish, and then the actual show begins at six. So I personally hung over 100 works and had them ready. I know most of the other teachers have similar, so there's going to be a really wonderful representation of our student body from all three buildings. And it's one of the highlights of the school year, definitely for the art teachers, but also, I think, for the district itself. So I'd invite you all to come, and thanks again for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for sharing your talents and for sharing the works of your students. It's incredible. And everyone, please mark your calendars. It'll be so good to be back up seeing everyone's art in person. Moving on to Board President and Board Members' comments. The Policy Committee meeting met less a week ago, Monday on May 9. We are continuing to do the work nearly weekly. Thank you to Mr. Mambridi for continuing to herd the cat and move us through this very, very in-depth review. I think to Mrs. Daniel, Mr. Kathy for participating, and to Mr. Russ, of course, and to Ms. George as well. Stay tuned because we have policies on the agenda coming up.
Yes, Joe and I both did a webinar. Joe and I both did a webinar called Collection, Selection, and Objection, which referred to the rights the rights of parents and the rights in teachers, administrators, and so on, when it comes to curriculum in regards to the collection, selection of curriculum and objections that might come in. And one of the things that jumped out at me is the authority of the board and precedent. The precedent has cited the Boards of Education over the years. It says the authority of the Board of Education to prescribe the course of study in schools, including the use of textbooks, is broad. The parents of a student cannot compel a Board of Education to use a particular book or to discontinue the use of a particular book. They can observe books and ask for an independent study. They always have that right. But I think it's important as things change in this world that we be aware. And as many people, I printed off the legal part of it. If anybody's interested in it, you're welcome to it. It's important information for the future.
Yeah, I'll just add that that was a, it was a great day spent. I was actually in person at BOC's with Ms. Lyons, Mr. Mambridi, and our high school librarian, Ms. And then there never did, I think I would be taking a day off work to spend the time with 600-plus librarians from around the state. But there I was. But I think that it was valuable time and that from the policy committee's standpoint, I think we'll have things to talk about and it'll help us strengthen those.
Thank you very much.
I just want to add one more thing onto that is, or one additional thing. I also had the pleasure of attending all three unified basketball games. I mean, I tell you what, if you're having a bad day, go to one of those. Holy cow, that is one of the most uplifting experiences you can imagine. So bravo to everyone who's been involved in that.
That's where my mind jaded.
Well, just to note, Mrs. Ohiler and I participated in the League of Women Voters Forum the other night with potential candidates for the school board. And it was a little bit grueling. It was, I think it was like 15 questions. Even when we thought they were done, they still had another one. But they put a lot of time and effort in it, and I know someone was missing, Mrs. Brunson. Dan, our thoughts were with her. I know she's been a big part of that for years, and she couldn't be with us. But several of us had our thoughts with her, and I just wanted to share that with you. But it was a, it was good and bad. I think people seem to enjoy, it was watching around the world, so. As far as I know, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Anything?
On May 6, the Safety Committee met. We went through the general information for each school, just discussed any safety issues that had come up. There was really nothing pressing, so a majority of our time was spent looking at the the district safety plan.
Emergency response.
Yeah, that's why I should pull it up. The district emergency response plan. So we spent a majority of our time going through that methodically and just comparing it and having discussions about that. And we're going to continue to do that at our next meeting, which will be in fall, is that? Yeah, it must be in the fall. Yeah, yeah, because that was, that was our most, that was the end of our meetings for this year. And then our next, the other meeting I attended was the Code of Conduct. We have another one tomorrow, and that was with Wyler, Mr. Brunson, and Miss Wyler was also at the Safety Committee meeting. And we basically went through the BOC's Code of Conduct and our Code of Conduct, and we are working our way through with various stakeholders, administrators, members of the board, and just working our way through the Code of Conduct. It was students and students, yes, parents. So we are working our way through. It was about three, three and a half hours. We met last week. We have another extended meeting again tomorrow, and the plan is to hopefully have this reviewed and ready for July.
Thank you, Mrs. Daniel.
Well, I'd just like to extend my appreciation to the Policy Committee. I spent better part of this afternoon reading the policies that we're voting on tonight, and I had a little trouble. The last time, I confessed that I may have voted for the first reading without having actually read. So I figured that I really needed to vote some time to them this afternoon, but there, I loved that first group of policies. I would have voted positively for them in an informed way, but I knew I had one more chance this time. So they're really good policies, and they're succinct, and they focus on what's appropriate for our school district. And I know how hard it is to do this kind of work because I've done it before myself. So the, I appreciate the work that the committee is doing, and this is a long list of policies today. Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. Thank you to all the board members for your participation in that committee and the hard work that you do away from the board tables. It's very much appreciated. Administrator comment? Mr. Brown?
Very brief one. I just want to make sure that you all received the email that our LEAK Capitol event that was originally scheduled for tomorrow night has been postponed to next Thursday. So it'll be Thursday, maybe you didn't receive the email. You received the invitation, and then since then, we did end up having to change it. So the Capitol event will be Thursday, May 26 at Knox. So you should all be receiving an email that was sent out today, so.
Thank you.
Where that, hopefully you can.
I'd just like to just make a comment on that. The last time we had it, it's been a couple of years now, unfortunately. But they did, they've done it a different way. But I think the opportunity at Knox is really unique. And the last time we were there, I have to say it was blown away by the quality awfulness of their work. It's really a year-long project that they focus on. Each one of the students has different ideas, and they bring it to their teachers. And the two people who are monitoring it are really doing a great job facilitating their students' ability to step outside and really think about things differently and create some things that are just really quite amazing. So if you have a chance to go, I know there's a lot of things, right, that I think's going on. But that is one of the great events of the year. I really appreciate that a lot.
Mr. Brown, do you have a time?
Six thirty.
I heard you. I was just going to say the last one that we went to that Brian was just mentioning. They call it a passion project, and that came out loud and clear with those kids when I was talking to them.
And you will notice the same this year.
Oh, it's just, that's just worthwhile going to.
Thank you.
Brief announcement. So our Rocket Club, we had mentioned last time they qualified for nationals. So I just want to give them a little congratulations. So the members of that team are Thomas Riker, William Freddy, Oliver, and Calvin Saxak, Adam Mugrabi, and Parker Madigan. So they went this past weekend to the national competition, and among 100 teams, they placed, drumroll, 21st out of 100. And the top 24 teams qualified for the NASA Student Launch Program, which allows them to build a high-powered rocket and launch it in Alabama later in the year. So they were within the top 24, so they qualified for that second one. So congratulations to the Rocket Club. So they're hopeful that they can replicate and potentially even improve next year.
They're launching it to Alabama.
Yeah, just a comment on that. Yeah, just to comment on that, that's, um, kind of, uh, the work in progress. We started the rocket club a few years ago, uh, and every year they seem to get better and better. But this year, the. To qualify for the national, uh, rocket launch is really, really difficult. You are competing against teams from across the country and, and just to get to that level. But to finish in the top 24 is just extraordinary. Lots of engineering, lots of time and effort creativity. All of that's going into making that project work, teamwork. Because you have all these different people working on the project along with the, the guidance of, of, of Mr. Wallace as well. So we're grateful for his work too. But. The kids are just doing amazing things and that is really exciting. I can't wait to.
You can see the excitement in their faces. Like every time they come in the office, the pride, it's, it's really.
It's really a great honor. It was in Washington.
Yeah, Virginia. So it's not the Washington, yeah.
That's like, thank you. Yeah.
Just briefly tomorrow, you'll, or excuse, Thursday, uh, you're going to see all of the seniors, um, performing community service around East Aurora. From Knox to, uh, can't even look at the sandwich outside of, but East Aurora to Providence Farms to, um, Hampton Park. So we're excited to bring that back for, for the second year row. Thank K-Screen, uh, as our community service. Coordinator for organizing all of those opportunities. I think I'll be up so excited about community groups and locations. Uh, there are some, some of your volunteers. So we'll do that all day Thursday and finish up at the high school for an afternoon barbecue. And then on Friday, it's prom. So we have 300 students who are going to be attending our prom, annexed, and then we'll head back to the high school for post-prom. First, I'm thrilled to have a traditional prom back this year.
In fact, I can just comment and then I'd just like to thank the PTO again for coordinating post-prom for us. It's, uh, gonna be a, a great event, um, as it always is. And. Also like to thank, um, Mrs. Perota and, um, Mrs., uh, Mahoney, uh, for the senior banners. Uh, they helped us to coordinate that again this year and they, they got it started. Two years ago. And this is the third, uh, the third graduating class that will be, uh, represented on Main Street. So we're really grateful. Everybody seems to love it. Lots of positive feedback from the community. The parents really, really love it. And, uh, and we just thank them for coordinating that for us every year to make sure it's taken care of and. And to the village as well, because they have to change the flags at all. It's 75 or 80, 80, uh, posts. Uh, and then they're going to use the equipment because we bought the, the brackets. Um, so we bought the bracket. So we're going to lend them to the village who have been going to display veterans. Banners after our students banners come down. So that's really nice as well.
That's cool.
That's what I do. Any other administrators with comments this evening? Thank you all for being here. We're moving on to item eight, community comment. Yes, hopefully everyone will dread that in the agenda. Um, first, before I forget, as I've gotten known to do in the past, we did receive some letters. On May 6th, we received a letter from, uh, Mrs. Cassidy regarding sign ordinance, assignment coordinates. New York Rock and Review sent us a message on five nine regarding, um, the video availability of our Board of Ed meeting. Lauren Nicholas sent us a message on five nine regarding candidate legitimacy. Doug Crowe sent us a message on five 10 regarding absentee ballot availability. And Becky O'Connor sent us two messages, five 13 and five 16 on the farm to institution representative. Um, and additional information on the bidding process. Board members, have you all received those emails on? Thank you very much. Um, we have one request, uh, to speak with, um, community member and we ask that members address. Board respectfully and limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, Mike Hart? Okay, nevermind. Thank you. Moving on to item nine, reports and discussion items. Item A is the 22, 20, 20, 22, 20, 23 Board of Education goals. We have adjusted the evaluation process that was outdated. So we are now going to discuss. Our goal for the Board of Education for the coming year. I've made some notes from things that I've heard from each of you individually, but would anyone like to kick us off? With the recommended board goal or topics they'd like to cover?
I'll start since we're in the budget season of a budget vote today. Um, I do like the committee structure that we have. A lot of work gets done, a lot of work's getting done at the. The, the building levels and, and filtering its way up to superintendent's office, the business office, and it gets to the committee structure. I do like that. A lot of work gets done. What I would like to see a little bit more of is a little more information brought to the full board. So we can discuss some of the, um. We all have our own priorities. I think we could share those a little bit and see if we're on the same page with some of those priorities as a group and, uh. And certainly as we take a look at, um, weaning off of the COVID grants, moving some expenditures or some of the expenditures from the grants back to the general fund. We certainly want to do respective of the school district tax levy and, uh, with the, and maybe. Bring some options to the board of how we can take that tax levy and certainly, you know, there'll be an increase, you know, every year there's, there's an increase, but. You know, maybe moderate, moderate that a little bit, um, with some, with some options to, uh, as we bring that all forward, how can we bring it to the general fund? Oh, with, uh, the minimal impact on the tax levy. I think some of that needs to be discussed. With the entire group, especially if we're talking about, uh, maybe taking a look some of the coursework we have, some of the, I mentioned that the other night at the, uh, at the event we had. See what our enrollment is in some of the elective classes and see if that's viable for next year. If not, then maybe some of the money towards some of those classes could be moved over. So. I just think some of those discussions we should do as a full board, but the committee structure still has real value and a lot gets done. So. I did talk about that as a goal. I don't know if the board wants to accept that as a goal, but that, that's where I'm coming from with that.
Thank you. I'm going to suggest we throw a bunch of ideas on the table and then make sure everybody gets a chance to be heard and then we can decide how we. Do collectively. Danny?
One of, one of, um, my board goals would be for us to hopefully get back into, obviously with COVID, we couldn't do, but doing the retreats because I found those to be very worthwhile. We would pick a topic for some of the board members that maybe weren't here at that time. I'll do a pick a topic and then we would meet and we would, um. With administrators and we would discuss that topic, you know, in detail. And, and it was very educational. I thought it was a really worthwhile process to do. So I would like to, obviously we couldn't do that because of COVID, but I would like to put that. On our list of goals to maybe set up a board retreat. Um, and I don't know, I think we used to do it with the administrators and.
We tended to do them more educationally. So it was less discussion and more receipt of information.
Right.
So we definitely did that with the administrators and then the ones where they were discussion-based, it would tend to be more workshop, team building. So it wasn't.
Right. So even doing both of those then, whether or not we can do more of the workshop or it's just our board, sort of the team building and then maybe once a year doing. The ones with the, that's more that.
Other, other recommendations, suggestions?
I would, uh, both, both of those, I, I agree with wholeheartedly and, uh, in particular, Mr. Flowers, you know, coming on as a, a new board member who hasn't. Also been part of the budget, uh, process prior to life on the board. Um, you know. I think that, I think that understanding more of where my, my voice can be heard and where I can contribute would be helpful. And that, I guess, ties into. The, the goal that I, I would add to those is, uh, develop some sort of onboarding process for, uh, new board member. Um, having gone through this, uh, despite my familiarity with the, the board and the meeting processes and all of that, there's. So much to learn about this service. Um, and it can be, it can be, um, it can be overwhelming and. It can feel if personally, you know, there were times where I, I wasn't sure who to go to and I didn't want to bother people. And so I had, you know, sometimes, you know, didn't go. Uh, but I think that if we were to put together a, a, a way to bring people on board. Um, and maybe give them a, a, a board buddy, if you will, uh, of sorts to sort of get that, that's the person you, you go to when you don't know who to go to. Uh, so that they, they feel comfortable at least, you know, bothering that person, um, because they're meant to be bothered. Uh, so. That, uh, that would be my, that, that would be a goal from my perspective.
Thank you. Saying it's really rough, the first year it gets better isn't enough.
I, I believe you.
Thank you for that suggestion.
I actually am going to piggyback off of Mr. Cassidy's because that was the one that I thought was really important. Creating some type of new member handbook. Um, or have an orientation and again to the mentor, um, yeah, peer mentor in a sense. So last year we were, um. Talking about appointing a person, we spoke on camera about what it is to be a board member and what your role was and what you're going to have to do and not have to do. And I remember Dan, you spoke and it was absolutely amazing. So that's something that I think would be really beneficial for all, um, potential new board members. Once they get on the board to watch that video again, because it was everything that you would need.
Sounds great.
Yeah, you saw.
And I, and I think.
Wish I could remember it, but.
It's probably on video.
Well, we did do orientation programs for new board members for many years. I, I helped with, uh, with Judy and, uh, Terry when they first joined the board and, uh. It's fun for an experienced board member to be able to sit down with a new person and, uh. Listen to what their concerns are, help them through the process. So I, I second that. It's, all three of these ideas are excellent.
And along that same note, as we know, when you are a new board member, I think we want to encourage, um, the new board members as soon as possible to go to those mandatory trainings that are required. Because I think you have a full, if I remember correctly, it was so long ago, but I think you have a full year to attend that mandatory training. But you are so much better off going to that mandatory training as soon as possible. Because it has both the finance perspective and then your role as a board member. So it really can help to get all of that. Set out for you and then obviously all of, all of your fellow board members helping you. But I think that encouraging any. Potential new board members to attend that as soon as possible is important.
Paul has run those, uh, the financial part of those training programs for, uh, for the School Boards Association over the years. Paul, do you? Do you find that rewarding to, uh, meeting with groups of new board members from other districts as well?
It is. And, and me and doing it in person is a better option than virtual for sure. And I know the, the classes they have out here, I think it's two, two hours, might be virtual and four might be in person or whatever. It's beneficial all the way around. Anytime you can meet people in the same line of business you're in or whatever, you, you learn stuff and, uh, and trade information. But yeah. I enjoy teaching it and I enjoy being part of the classes too.
And along those same lines, the, the, um, over the years, uh, I know I have not attended as many board development opportunities as I did. The first 15 years or so that I was on the school board, but, but since the pandemic struck, I haven't been to hardly any of those except the virtual. And, and so I, I think we need to get back to going not sometimes as a whole board, other times it twos and threes. To these opportunities and, and have a chance to, to not only learn, but to get to know each other better as we do that. I, I can still remember our entire board being at the, uh, school boards convention when it was downtown Buffalo at the convention center. And I could see, uh, you know, I'd be coming from one session, going to the next and I saw three or four of our board members and administrators sitting around. Talking about one they had just been to. So they, it's, uh, I, it, this coming, uh, conference is not in Buffalo, but it will come back to Buffalo probably next year or the year after. And I think we should consider, uh, when it's close, uh, all of us going and, uh, participating in this, uh. Uh, it's, uh, it's a, a chance for us to continue to grow as board members, which, uh, you know, there's those six hours of training in finance and in governance. Get you off to a good start, but it's, it's not enough. Uh, so you need to, you need to be able to do workshops run by, uh. Some of these really top-flight attorneys and, and superintendents and other board members who, who've been through some of the problems we're facing. And have really good, uh, ideas for how you can approach.
What we miss virtually, uh, while I think, uh, Visba has done a great job of providing opportunities virtually as best they can. What was one of the other things that's so great about those in-person conventions is getting to hear from folks across the states who might hear somebody else who's a similarly sized district with. A different challenger or something somewhat related and it sparks, it sparks new ideas and develops new ways of thinking.
Well, sometimes it just makes you feel good, you know? I remember sitting down with, at lunch with the Rochester Board of Education. So I was the only one at the table who was not a member of the Rochester team. But there was a seat there, you know, and there was no place else to sit. So I sat there and I walked away from there thinking, thank God, we're in Eastern Cora. Hello, are you there Rochester?
And along, well, as we're talking about NISBA being, you know, obviously it's not in Buffalo every couple of years it's here, but the one thing that we always did go to, Dan, or tried to get a group of people to go to this in the summer was the law conference. And hopefully, you know, obviously we've done all of those, or many of us have done those virtually over the last couple of years, but I think this year it may. Be in person again. So potentially we could get a group of people, um, that are available to go to the law.
It's well worthwhile and it's, it's two of them. There's the one run by the School Boards Association, uh, but in the summer, but then the Hudson Russ, uh, conference. Uh, we, we use Hudson Russ for our, uh, bonding at work and, uh, and they invite us to their conference and it's wonderful. I mean, it's, they, they have a team of attorneys that are. Excel in, uh, every aspect of, uh, school law. And, uh, so it's terrific to hear their point of view.
Changes so dramatically that I always did the special ed law that one.
Yeah.
Because they, it was just, it changes so dramatically to try to keep up on that.
And Dana, you bring up a good point that there are reasons to work with a multitude of resources because you get more opportunities.
Oh, absolutely. Well, Harris Beach, we still work with them for the special ed, uh, aspect side. And they do similar trainings, which are terrific to, to keep people up to date. So I'm sure our administrators attend them occasionally and we should too. So I, I need to get back on the path to, uh, learning.
This year's convention is in Syracuse. Yeah. So it's a little closer. I'm talking about the retreat that you had mentioned, Kim. Um, we still have the full retreat that we were supposed to do before the pandemic hit.
That was in February.
That, yes. So we still, we had prepped all of that. Um, but the other.
Do you remember, Mr. Manbretti?
It was, um, it was funny.
It involved toast.
It was, it was all on chance there. We were, it was a year before the pandemic. We, we got snowed out. So this year, and we were supposed to envision what the, this. East world would look like in five years from now. Um, and Ron actually had.
Oh, that's great.
It would have been funny to go back and look at those notes in light of the last years, but, but it is, it would be still very opportune now because we've done a lot of work, especially with the new candidates that we're hiring. Uh, kind of what did we learn? What's here to stay? What do we need to get back to, um, visioning work, uh, and as we're not going to blast it coming out of this pandemic. Um, so really to kind of have a really robust conversation about, there, there has been some good and some learning that's come from this and some of the things is we definitely got to get back to doing those things. So that same framework that we were going to use to kind of predict the future, we could still do that, but with obviously as a tremendous disruption. To normalcy and almost kind of this is the chance to start that, that rebuild. Um, so all of that is prep. We have copies made. We have. Power points made. We have everything.
And the other one we had, um, was Patrick Longo. He's the member relations manager from NISBA. And when Jessica and I talked with him in January, he said he would come in and he would do, um. A workshop with the board on, um, culture and leadership. So that's another option we have.
I think as we have topics for some of these things, we also ought to be thinking about. How we can involve others working with us so that we can have interaction with other groups of people. Uh, there are times when it's appropriate for a topic to be simply the board discussing that topic. Other times having the administrators with us makes sense. I think there should be times when we have teachers as well. Uh, if it's a topic that relates to learning, I don't see any reason why board members and teachers cannot get together and have a workshop, a, a retreat. Uh, obviously we can't take the whole teaching staff, but, but if there's seven of us, why not have seven teachers and, and the 14 people along with the superintendent and several other central office people get together. And, and have a, a, a confab on that, that particular topic. Or maybe there's one that relates to buildings that, where we should invite the principals to be part of, of our discussion. Uh, they, I, I just think we need to broaden out our. Our concept of who. I just think we need to broaden out our, our concept of who attends workshops and retreats. There should be some where it would be appropriate to have students. We had two students at the Code of Conduct of planning, wonderful input from those two folks. So there's no reason why when we're talking about something else that affects students, that we shouldn't have a few students as part of that discussion as well.
That's a good point, Dan. When we do the visitations, we always go to Parkdale and their advisory committee is there. And it's an multipurpose room. We have that discussion with them and they explain what's.
Very productive.
I mean, yeah, so that would be a great, that's a great suggestion.
Well, and it shows that we're still, we're already doing some of it. And when we do do it, we come back thinking, wow, that was worth it.
The more we hear, the more engaged we are, the better we do our job.
Sure.
Mr. Mouse, did you have any specific goals or thoughts?
No, I'm short.
Okay, so let's see, if I have.
Can I just make one?
Go ahead.
I think, I think the law conference is back on for this year. I think I may have just received.
It is, I do believe in this.
So it's, you should be getting.
It's in August.
It's usually the first weekend in August. I think NISBA does it. There's also one that they do, I think, down in Rochester.
They do one in conjunction with the convention, but the one we attend is the local one.
I know, Mrs. Dana, you've done an additional, you've done an additional one.
I do, I do NISBA and I do the local one.
Well, you get CTE credit.
Right. CL, yeah.
CL.
CL, continuing.
Yeah, excellent.
We have some other tasks before us that are already, we have to decide how we, I think we've had a lot of great ideas. We probably want to boil this down to a couple of specific goals, but there may be things that we just assign ourselves and decide to do. Remembering that we haven't officially had board goals and we've managed to have retreats in the past, so we can decide how to frame those things. We've talked about updating the policy manual and how important that is. We are already doing that work. It is underway, but it continues to be something we need to hold our feet to the fire and do. We've talked about, Mr. Blowers touched on this a bit, but plans for sustaining the positions that we brought on as we move off the federal COVID relief funds, balancing needs of students and taxpayers, and continuing to support our students and staff. I've heard mention, we're already doing these things. Continuing to support our students and staff as we move through the next phase, next phase of the pandemic and the needs that people have that are increased from three years ago. Where would folks like to go? We've talked about those things I just mentioned. We talked about retreats. We talked about bringing, maybe keeping committees, but also bringing more budget work directly to the board.
I mean, that's my proposal to talk about, yes, to boil it down, yeah.
Okay. We can frame it up however includes everyone's wishes and then developing an onboarding process for new board members.
So how many things have you got?
Okay, ignore all the nonsense I just said. We have, we have the, I know that I've heard different board members saying that we want to, we want to focus on balancing the needs of the taxpayers and the needs of the students. At least if we frame that up with the review of the budget and then bringing that to the full board. So budget, budget process, budget concerns, retreats, and what, preparing, bearing retreats, retreats, and then developing an onboarding process for new board members.
And it sounds like it's almost dusting off and updating the process, the onboarding process.
It's really dope. Three, three goals?
I mean, then there's a lot of subsets to each of those goals. So it's not as though we just have three things we're working on. So I think those are the major areas.
I've done some reviews of what other districts do for board goals and it's really all over the map. So I think what we have the opportunity to do right now is to frame what those goals are. I would like to see us have goals that are robust and usable and that we can move on to the following year. Not just a thing that we check off to say, oh, yes, everyone, we have board goals and we've done them. So I think having goals that give us room to move and show progress while also adapting. All right. So anyone want to pick up a number one goal? First goal?
I would go with the budgeting. The budget process.
And everyone is comfortable with the idea of, let's say, moving more of the budget process and decision making to the full board? Is that part of the goal?
And keeping, still keeping the budget committee as we talked about, but then I guess, is it within that committee? Then the discussion is, how is presented or how would that work?
Yes, keep the committee structure. I think we need to be together. We talk about what our priorities are. And maybe the priorities are to keep what we have and how we use the grant funds. Or maybe there's some other ideas from the board, how we use that. And certainly spend a little more discussion directly with the tax. Like I know we talk about the tax cap and coming off of that, you know, a tenth of a percent or two tenths of a percent. And I'm talking about maybe talking about real numbers, what it would look like if we even backed off of that further. And maybe it's something we just couldn't accept as a board and it'd be, it just wouldn't be in our benefits to do that. But I just think those, if you understand what I'm saying, those type of topics, I think, are for the entire board and for the public to hear. But I think a lot of what we do in accumulating information and with the administrators and certainly with the faculty and staff, that can be done at the committee level. But at some point, we need to have an idea with, lack of a better term, what the budget gap is. Where are we? What's going in? What do we value at that point? And we still have some ideas or some things that are sitting out that a superintendent has a list of things we've either completed or basically in progress and things we need to get to in the future. And I think we need to, as an entire board, review those and discuss those a little bit. Still, a lot of the work we've done at the committee level would be my recommendation.
So what you said initially, coupled with that, you indicated that maybe the committee could, or it sounded to me like maybe the committee could bring some different options to the board that would help encourage discussion.
Yes, and those options would need to come from certainly administration and stuff. But at least, yes, that's exactly what I'm saying in shorter words, yes.
Well, think about the discussion we've had for the last 10 minutes. This is a meaty discussion about what's important topics. We need to take that same model and use it in the development of the budget, in my view. So that we're looking at important aspects of the district's operation and we, as a board, are discussing what the future holds for that part of the budget.
Yeah. And that's where I was going with it as well, Dan, was sort of the idea of the discussion about what are our priorities as a board, you know, individual board members sharing their ideas and getting their priorities on, that the committee then can take and figure out and then come back with the options. And it actually makes me think of something that I shared with Mr. Russ that I had seen on Depew's website. They had shared at the beginning of this year with their, with their district. What is it? The thought exchange? A thought exchange on board or on budget priorities. And similar to, you know, we had done one during COVID with regards to priorities. And it's, if I remember correctly, it's the one where people put ideas on there and others can read them and give them the thumbs up, thumbs down. And you can see how ideas are, you know, supported across many different people. To do something like that would take what we're talking about here, but then just send it out to the district and get a temperature and a pulse from the district on what are their priorities? To do that in the fall, somewhat sometime early, just to understand would help maybe, one, guide us and then further guide the committee as well. It's electronic, yeah. It was, I think by the time I stumbled across it, it was done. And I'm not a member of the district, so I didn't, I didn't do it, but it would be interesting to find out from them. The one, if that's something they've done in the past, how effective it is? What are the pitfalls of doing it that way and how they intend to continue it or maybe never do it ever again? Maybe it was a terrible idea, who knows?
It would be great to hear more.
I would have to imagine that getting all those voices and being able to see what trends would be extremely valuable.
Was this Depew you said?
Yes, it was Dr. Ray, right? Yes.
We've done some research, a lot has changed, so.
That's awesome.
But so I understand that this is just within the district, so the community, we're not really talking to the community about any of these ideas. Is that correct?
Well, it goes out to them. It goes to, it goes to the, all the, all the community members within the district to share their thoughts.
Not just district families, it's the entire community.
Right.
You define like.
But that's what I was trying, in Depew, do you know how they did it? Did they do the entire community or was it just like?
It was posted, the link was posted on their website, so even. I don't know how they put any controls around it with regards to preventing guys like me from mucking up the waters, which I didn't.
Right, right.
But yeah, so I mean, it would be, it would be worth investigating and it would be a great way, I guess.
Outreach to the community.
Yeah, exactly.
A great outreach to the community.
That's great because we have requests to do workshops and forums with the community, but we know that those tend to either be very poorly attended or it's a faction of people who come to talk about one topic. It doesn't reach into the broader community. So I think the more ideas we have for outreach, the better, we're more likely to reach more folks, the more we.
Yeah, because there's, yeah, because there's only so many people, you know, that we can all speak with. And this casts a much wider net.
Thank you for the idea. So back to goals. First goal, keeping the committee structure, move the budget process, in the, through the budget process, move more decision making to the full board. Topics that come to the full board include big topics such as the tax levy, more, I will work on framing this in a way that makes more sense. More thorough discussion and conversation on the budget at the board table. Anything else I'm missing on that one other than make that make sense?
Thank you.
Thank you. One thought that popped into my head as we were talking, Joe, I recognize that the pendulum swings and we've tended to push more to the committee and let the committee come forward with the administrator and superintendent's recommendation. In the past, we have been much more in the weeds at the board table to the point of board members laying on their swords for particular classes. And I would suggest probably somewhere in the middle is going to be our sweet spot. We always want to be listening to the people who are closest to our students when it comes to what the programming needs are. But of course, we're supposed to be representing the community, so we may be hearing from other folks. Any other thoughts on that one?
I agree.
Okay. Just wanted to get that out there before we were fighting for any particular thing. Second topic was, let's go with retreats. That's my, that's my goal, have retreats.
Well, it's retreats and board development in general. So I've always felt that individual board members should have their own development plan. And that would include things that we all did together, like retreats.
Oh, now you're consolidating my third into a second because board development would include board onboarding.
Yeah, I think, well, yeah, that's sure.
Retreats and board development. I suggest we aim for at least one retreat in the coming year. And I think if we have two, I think what I've heard from the table is possibly a smaller retreat. Maybe the Patrick Longo culture of leadership would be board focused and then maybe something broader. And we can think about what's appropriate if that visioning work goes as far as teachers and students. That could be really quite a mind expanding opportunity.
Let's do something fun together too.
We polled one year.
That was great. That was memorable, even though I didn't vote. I tipped score.
I would have liked that to be a fly on the wall, not a voter.
Yeah, as I first, I want to speak about the school visitations and how we really appreciated the advisory committee of Parkdale. That's something we've been doing for years. Maybe that's something we should then, when we do the next visitation, middle school and high school have their advisory team be there as well so we can have a conversation.
Mr. Brown did that last year.
Yeah.
Yes.
And actually, we did do that in high school too. We usually meet in high school. We meet upstairs. Yeah, we meet in the office upstairs.
With some of the counselors.
Well, we moved the counselors for a couple of years.
No, but in previous years, we, I thought we would meet.
With the, with the administrative.
One suggestion I would make, whoever takes over that visitation, be thoughtful to the, the teachers have their parent teacher conferences. That just hit that big lump in the fall. And if you can just do them before that, it's a gift to them. I mean, they don't have to worry about, oh my God, is this conference day or, you know? It just makes it easier for the administrators.
Can I ask the board to remember that comment at the reorg meeting and why don't we start planning right then? We pick our, we pick our committees and let's start talking dates that things need to happen. Second goal, board development, doing food retreats and an onboarding process for new board members. Any other thoughts?
No.
All right. I'm going to see if I can find that video.
Or we'll recreate it.
Yes.
On a bus tour. Because even Paul said how valuable that was. Know exactly what your goal was going to be, what you were expecting.
Are you made a video?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't think we, we didn't make a video. We had a conversation that was recorded.
Yeah.
So you may not recall making a video.
That I can buy. I don't remember making a movie.
I live in a land where I just assume that I'm always being recorded. I'm not doing it intentionally, it's just happening. So we were recorded when we have the board meeting discussing our goals for the appointee. Retreats and onboarding process for new board members. Okay, I will write something up that we can look at, point to, follow and accomplish.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, guys.
Thank you all. Bye, guys.
Hey, guys. Thank you for staying for this, you know? I know you can leave at eight, but thanks for staying. That's respectful.
It is.
Good people.
See, that's one of the things that have come out of the pandemic, that's a positive. They created this new, this new day and it just.
I think that's.
Barbecue and then the prawn. I mean, that's what a wonderful week that is for all the students.
That's a good idea.
And they may actually be working at Knox because, are they working at Knox this year? Yeah, so they're going to clean it off before our caption. So. So it's, they were really grateful because they had wedding season last year. And so our kids came in and included all the grounds and they're like, wow, that's really helpful because we have a wedding like three days.
So, Mr. Robert, this, like, like last year, this meets, this fulfills the requirements for community service.
It does. Next year, the plan is to, to serve states, one is the fall. I'll tell you, the PR will expand it to.
That's great.
That's just awesome. It's probably one of the best things. I just think that's so good. The community comes back and talks about it. I hear it all the time. So it's very cool.
The other thing that we're doing in Providence Farm was, was a dabble in that, is expanding it beyond beach or
They used to be just on you at home, like, they just moved. Not that long ago.
Exactly. For that project, we're going to have students have some artistic ability or those who don't. I think it'll work and with each of the families that have farms, they're going to design nameplates for their plot of land.
So.
That's so cool.
That's that's one that I'm I'm looking forward to. There's gonna be translators are gonna be there working with our students so they communicate with the families. Special, special.
Thank you. Um, moving on to item 10, legislation. Is there any legislation to come forward to keep in? Item 11, is there anyone who wishes to, a board member wishes to withdraw consent or prego?
No.
They have a motion to approve the consensus that I got. So moved by Mrs. O'Wiler, seconded by Mr. Daniel. Discussion. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Pose. Sentence carried seven zero. Items require or in board action. All right, here's the policy. Thank you, Mr. Brandy. Here we go. Item A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve for a second reading the following policies: record management, emergency response drills, idling school transportation, board meeting rules, regular and special meetings, and concerns from members of the public. Have motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Daniel, seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion. Thank you after your effort. All of the paper.
All right.
All right.
Opposed, of sentence carried seven zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends that Board of Education approve for a first reading to filing revised policies, visitors to the school, operation of motor driven vehicles on district property, code of conduct, prohibition of weapons on school grounds, threat of violence in school, non discrimination and anti harassment in the district, non resident student enrollment, loss or destruction of district property or resources, and equal educational opportunities. I have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Seconded by Mrs. Malice. Discussion.
Uh, the prohibition of weapons on school grounds, there is a typographical error in one of the last sentences. I don't have it in front of me here because I can't pull it up on my fault. But it's just, uh, it's it's, uh, it's just, you'll, it's anybody who reads the last sentence there in that one paragraph will pick it up.
Right, well, it's that typo obviously without changing the meaning.
Yeah, no, it's it's it won't change the meaning. It's just, uh.
Okay.
It should say, it says add or something, and it should say or.
Okay.
Or it's something like that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brandy. Thank you, Mr. Brunson, for finding that typo. Everyone else, all those in favor are approving with the amendment to the typo. The first reading. All those in favor?
All right.
Post. Attention. Carried seven zero. Item 13A, we can't do 13A. I didn't read yet. All right, well, anybody have any good stories?
That's a dangerous question.
Uh, our next item on the agenda is to approve the results of the budget vote on election.
Just a question on the annual dinner. Do we?
Oh.
Yeah, the reservations for that, we go through Sue or Jackie or what? Through you?
Sue. Sue, Sue, or Jackie.
Okay.
Is that your county?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good event.
Um, just for the purposes of recording, we did start the meeting at six forty five, but we did six five forty five, my apologies, five forty five. Um, but we did not record that portion because I was by communicator and did not share that we were going to be starting at five forty five. Um, so the meet, the meeting opened, we said the pledge, we had a moment of silence and we entered executive session. Thank you. I think we can.
I have a good story.
You have a good story.
Yes.
We could, we're going to recess the meeting. Yes, thank you. And then reconvene after reconvene after the the budget and election votes have been completed at nine P M. We're in recess. Hello again. This is the Easter. Hello again. This is the Easter Eye Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, May seventeenth. We're returning from a recess. We had hoped to move on to accepting the result of the annual election and budget vote, but there are votes still to be counted so that the this meeting will be adjourned. The meeting will be, the next meeting will be tomorrow evening to accept the results of the vote, and that will be at six P M. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second, seconded by Mrs. Malice. Discussion. All those in favor, sorry, that was, that was, Mrs. Malin? Yeah, Mr. Cassidy. Cassidy. Alice. Ten oh five.
All right.
Bye.
All right.
Opposed, of sentence carried seven zero, the meeting of the jar. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great, we have one six.